Get going. This is a staff meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, December 17, 2019. Welcome to all. We have a packed agenda today, and so we're going to get right to it. We have a continuation of a public hearing related to MSD. This is a process that we are going through. We've got a number of public hearings related to the CIP, the operating budget, and the rate recommendation. And so we are going to have the city come forward first. The city and the county were both available and here at our last public hearing, as well as some members of the public who commented to what we had in front of us at the time. We've got more information now, and have asked some questions at the last hearing of the city. And so I believe the city is prepared, MSD is prepared, to respond to some of those questions. So I'd like for you guys to go first. We'll take it up there, and then we'll turn it over to the county for a presentation as well. Okay? Thank you. So is it Director?
Yes.
Director Diana Christie, she's no longer the interim director. She, was that yesterday or the day before?
That was yesterday, yes.
So congratulations.
Thank you.[821.82][821.82](APPLAUSE)
So welcome, and thank you for being here and responding to our questions.
Thank you, and thanks for having me here today to respond to the questions last week, and just to clarify a few issues that were brought up. I wanted to start with the operating budget in particular, and we did send over a fair amount of information, and I know you may not have had time to look through it all, so I will try to explain what we have provided. Just to begin, rather than present the entire operating budget request again and to go through it, I want to summarize that MSD's operating budget request for 2020 is for a total of $221 million. That is for personnel, non-personnel, the SBU program, and debt service. This total budget is a 1.2% decrease from the 2019 MSD-approved budget. The savings that we are realizing in 2020 are primarily due to a lower payment for debt services in 2020. So to start, I'd like to walk through the adjustments that were made from the initial draft that was submitted on August 15th to what we have today. And also, just to clarify, there were some adjustments that were discussed last Thursday at the hearing that had not yet been finalized, that were under discussion. We do have a final adjustment and new request that has been approved by the city manager, and that was shared just today. That was summarized on this page that says Exhibit A. So that's what I'm going to be using to talk through the adjustments and to explain how our request has changed a bit. So initially, on August 15th, and I'll try to focus primarily on the personnel and non-personnel, since as we discussed last week, the SBU and the debt payment have been established and are not really up for discussion. So initially, the total personnel and non-personnel that we requested in August was 129.9 million. Today, we are requesting just at 125 million. And primarily, the changes, if you will look in the red column, the date there is November 22nd. The first change, however, was discussed early in October, and this was an increase to the personnel budget based on some refinements that we were making with it at the division level to our staffing plan and our staffing needs for 2020. So you'll see there that there was a slight increase in both the wastewater administration budget and the wastewater treatment budget that amounted to just under 1 million from the initial request. And that really was due to some positions that we had identified that we hadn't identified the first time around. And then you'll see also in that second, I'm sorry, in that first red column, the reductions that we also made to the non-personnel budget. The most significant reductions that we made at that time, these total mounted to about a $4 million reduction. 3.2 of those were reductions to the wastewater collections condition assessments that are performed. This is where we do have an existing budget, and we spent a significant amount of money to inspect and investigate our sewers. We were proposing to do a lot more in 2020 to really start to reduce that backlog of inspections on our highest and most critically, at critical risk sewers. However, we determined that we would scale back that increase this year and try to really work with the county to identify the appropriate pace at which to tackle those needs. So we reduced a significant amount for that. We also had some adjustments once we received the billing costs for 2019, so we were able to realize some savings there. And we decreased a few of the dollars that were being attributed to contracted staff based on our increases in the personnel. So there were, some of those dollar amounts are reflected as a decrease if we are able to get the additional staffing. In addition, we reduced the OTEA budget by 800,000, and that's how we came to a total request that was about $3 million lower than it was in August. So then, as discussed last week, we've continued to try to work through some of the increases in the personnel and the questions that have been raised. What we are showing is a reduction now in the personnel budget by $1 million. How this is done is to apply a vacancy credit that will require us to manage our existing budget and vacancies within each division by the dollar amount shown. As a result of that change, we reduced the personnel increase so that the total increase over 2019 is just 3.6 million. 2.4 of that represents the cost increases in healthcare and COLA, and 1.2 million is now going towards funding additional positions that we identified as critical. We also made one other adjustment, which was the $869,000 reduction to the fleet. So I think the key questions that arose last week really fell to those critical positions that we had identified, and that increase that, again, amounts to 1.2 to go towards filling additional positions in 2020. And I just wanted to spend a little bit of time, again, discussing why we have asked for that money and why we feel that that is a critical need for the utility. So initially, and this is, there's another handout that has by position, about 25 positions, that if you look to the bottom, the total there is 2.2 million. That is if we were to fill those 25 positions throughout the year. You can see the funding level on some positions is 100% and some is 75%. We are not asking for a full increase of 2.2 million any longer. So to be clear, MSD will have to manage its budget and its existing vacancies by not filling positions that are currently vacant, or as new positions become vacant when people leave or retire, we will have to properly manage within each division. But again, to look to the positions that we requested, it was, we were requested to identify which positions were for critical safety or operational needs. And I want to be clear that MSD based its request on what we determined already to be critical needs. MSD has 597 positions filled currently and 130 vacancies on its table of organization. Again, that's 130 positions today that are vacant, that have been, at some point in time, identified as needs for the utility. MSD cannot provide the vital services of collecting and treating wastewater without these resources, and it takes every division to make the system work. We rely on finance, customer service, HR, IT, maintenance, operations, and supervisors. The 25 requested positions were primarily in operations and maintenance. For example, if you, I'm sorry, before I get to that, so you can also see, though, that there's a large number of positions requested in our IT division. And while it might not be intuitive initially that these positions are critical, I'd like to point out that our IT division currently has 10 of its 27 positions vacant. Those cuts were made several years ago, and the department, the division has never really recovered from that. It's extremely important that we have a properly-staffed IT division. We manage our facilities and collection system using a SCADA network. We rely on sophisticated computer models to predict and respond to wet weather flow. We are also working diligently to identify and address cybersecurity threats that can bring our entire system down. And this is something that has been recognized at Homeland Security, that IT is central to the security of all critical infrastructure needed for the nation's security, economy, public health, and safety. Therefore, we feel as though the six positions that have been requested to be filled in 2020 are, in fact, critical for our operations. In addition, we've requested positions in our wastewater treatment division. Currently, we have 48 vacancies in wastewater treatment. 19 of those are in the maintenance section alone. We identified of those 48, the 10 most critical positions to fill in 2020. The wastewater collection division has 15 positions vacant. We identified three that are the most critical. Our regulatory compliance and safety has nine positions vacant, and we identified one that was critical. And in our watershed operations division, where we are operating our new wet weather facilities that we've invested, that the district has invested millions of dollars in in Phase 1, we have only two of our six plant operator positions filled. For next year, we asked for two additional positions. Those positions are needed so that we are no longer sharing and relying on overtime from our wastewater treatment operators. And as a result, when we don't have coverage in certain wet weather events, we have, in fact, had to overflow untreated wastewater during wet weather events due to a lack of staffing. So again, to reiterate, the request for this year was justified by adding 25 critical positions. However, we are now only seeking $1.2 million, which is not enough funding to fill all 25 positions. MSD will carefully manage its budget in each division, and we will make decisions as departures arise whether or not we can fill certain positions. We are reiterating today that this is a critical need for the staffing increase. I have shared with you the FTE, which shows our, by division, those vacancies that I mentioned. And I would just, again, like to remind you that in the original operating budget book, we did also include a written justification by position. That was on pages 20 through 25. So the one other issue that was raised in the operating budget that I wanted to share additional information was in regards to an explanation of when we determine that it's appropriate to have contracted staff versus using in-house labor. There is a fair amount of work that we do for our condition assessments where we have determined that that work is so technical and highly specialized and requires very particular training, that it is more cost-effective to contract some of that work. So there is a, I think it's a four-page handout describing that and how we make that decision. So if there are any questions about that, I'd be happy to take them or have Mary Lynn discuss that further. If not, I did have some comments on the CIP. Did you want me to just cover everything at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So MSD last week presented our capital improvement plan. As usual, our plan is a five-year budget, but the request for an appropriation of funds was for 2020. Just very briefly, our 2020 request was 168 million on 68 projects. That included 62 million in consent decree spending and 94.9 for asset management, which is the reinvestment in our sewers and treatment facilities. Just to reiterate, our CIP is an ongoing process. It's led by our engineering division. It's working directly with our operations staff to analyze our needs. We study our operations data and trends, evaluate alternatives, estimate budgets, schedules, and scope to put together the five-year CIP. This year, as we do every year, we started this process early, and it was our intention to recommend a budget based on sound engineering principles and pursuant to our obligations as manager and operator of the utility. We then spent a significant amount of time after receiving the regulators' proposed Phase 2 plan in July. Ultimately, that schedule has been shown to be unfeasible to implement and not consistent with MSD and the county's integrated planning philosophy. Thus, the CIP presented included consent decree bridge projects for 2020, Phase 1 construction compliance for 2020, and asset management for 2020. And for the years 21 through 24, we did not include consent decree projects, but it is understood that once a Phase 2 is established, including the affordability limits, the lowest priority asset management projects would necessarily be deferred. There were questions raised about the bridge schedule, so I did include the most recent, and this should be the last single page that you have. And please note, this is a draft and has some things on it that have not been finalized. So we do this, we have been providing this report monthly in our reporting, and we've been sharing this with the regulators. But the bridge schedule, when it was agreed upon and approved by the regulators, had projects spanning 2019 and 2020. So you can see the fourth column in shows the bridge commitment and the substantial completion milestones. And what this shows is that we do indeed have a few projects that have been, that are forecasting to be delayed. Some of those, however, have milestones at the end of 2020, and we have processes in place to mitigate those delays in an effort to reduce the number of projects that don't meet their milestone. One in particular is a reconstruction coordination. There's an asterisk. That project is a coordination with ODOT, and we are not actually held to that milestone. It's really without, it's out of our control. And then there's two projects at the bottom for SSO 700, and the one with the 2019 milestone, we unfortunately weren't able to edit this, but that is actually forecasted to meet the milestone this year. So we have made up that time. So overall, while, yes, we do have delays, in general, the bridge has spanned the two years as planned. Most of the delays in the bridge projects have been due to the fact that we entered into this without complete schedules and cost estimates, and we're relying on somewhat outdated data. And then I would like to mention that MSD has been working closely with the county since we prepared the initial submittal, and in fact, we identified some changes that are shown in the county's CIP, we identified them together, that are included in the county's modified CIP today. It does appear, though, that there are recommendations in the county-modified CIP that conflict with MSD's recommendations. However, in good faith, we are continuing to cooperate with the county and provide additional information to support its modified budget in an effort to have a budget approved this week. Certain changes discussed that we do not have Certain changes discussed that we do not have concerns with are the advancement of the diversion chamber bridge project yet this year, which brings the $27 million project off of the 2020, the 2020 budget, and the deferral of a significant amount of design funding for the conveyance projects by advancing only the planning phase in 2020 and deferring the design until the later years. This represents another $12 million reduction in the 2020 budget. MSD has not modified its own CIP because we were aware of the changes that were being made by the county, but we do support those two changes, and we are working closely on several of the others. I do want to point out that the changes, many of those changes I just mentioned do not represent the savings in the capital budget, but, and however, they are, I guess, reducing the spending in 2020 or the expenditures in 2020. We have concerns with a few other changes that were made by cutting projects up into phases without any supporting engineering justification. And in other cases, the county is recommending partially funding needing, needed allowance dollars with the expectation that the additional funds will indeed need to be appropriated in 2020. As a result, we are concerned that as drafted today, the county's CIP defers important upgrades again to asset management projects, which can be more costly in the long run. There's one other issue with the county's modified CIP, and that is the county placed about 38 projects or allowances on an Exhibit C, which is intended to be conditional. 30 of these 38 projects were included and had fact sheets describing the projects in particular in MSD's submittal. So we've already provided those fact sheets again with the updates requested, and we hope to work together to make sure that we do not have those projects conditional when the budget is approved this week. Should the board choose not to fund the program contingency, for example, that would essentially require us to shut down our capital program and the construction jobs that are underway because we do not have any project contingency. So we rely on that program contingency to be able to deliver any of the capital projects that are currently underway. And with that, I think the, as I mentioned, we also shared copies of the new fact sheets, which have some edits to bring the budgets in line with what the county has recommended. And our, it is our hope again to have those projects have funding appropriated yet this If there are any other questions that I did not address, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to give an overview of what you said and I think what the county is going to say in, in that we are dealing with a couple of different items here. My understanding relative to the operating budget is that we needed more information related to the positions that were being requested, the nature of them, the safety of them, and that we are relatively close to coming to an agreement on a dollar amount there that will fund the system for the, and, and these are all annual budgets. There are plans going out a number of years, but we do this every year. And so this is a one-year budget that we're referring to in either case. The CIP is different in that we're always trying to balance the consent decree projects with ongoing projects with asset management projects. And so we have this balance that we're always trying to strike when it comes to how we're funding all the projects, all relative to the rates and trying to hold rates as low as possible, especially right now when we're in a little bit of flux with some of the work that's being done with impervious surfaces and the, the lack of conclusion as to the structure, the overall structure of MSD. So we're in a kind of a difficult position, I think, as we continue to not have a resolution of that. So I just want to give that as a bit of an overview. Thank you for answering the questions. I did have an email kind of listing them out, and I appreciate the information. It's hard to digest in just a 10-minute period, but, but we will continue to review the responses to the questions. Do you have any questions or comments?
I don't know if Diana's going to come back up or is this?
She can if you.
Okay. I have several questions.
Do you want to ask her now?
So many, I don't have time today to answer. I appreciate the, to ask. I appreciate the information that you gave us. My concern, I looked at the budget, and for personnel, it's almost 50% of the whole budget that you're asking us for, and I don't understand that. I mean, I'm looking at the staffing patterns. I would also like to see responsibilities of these people that are listed, and also look at maybe some cross-training to allow some of these people to do some of the other responsibilities because normally, and I've looked at many budgets, even federal budgets, I would never approve a budget like this with 50% of the budget being personnel, understanding there are certain qualifications that some people can't do, but, and then you're asking for more employees eventually. I just think it's too high as it relates to employees, how many you have. I can't compare it because I don't, I did see something with salaries, but I'd like to see a level of responsibility. And as Madam President, it's it, we just got all of this information. That's why I couldn't give you direct eye contact as you were speaking. But I just think, Madam President, where I am on it, we've asked for information through our office, myself, my chief of staff, that we've not received before now. And looking at the possibility, I'll let the county present their information, but the possibility of maybe a quarterly budget versus looking at a yearly budget because it just seems like it's top-heavy with employees, and I don't know what they're doing and why we need so many and why with 50% of the budget. No wonder we can't get to the sewers and the bridges and things like that. I know you have to have people power to do it, but 50% of the budget is employees? I just don't get it, don't understand it. So I have to have a better clarification for myself before I approve the budget, so. And I have one other question as it relates to the bridges. The delay or lack of compliance according to your chart, the reason for delays are in a couple sentences, the reason for the delays would be what? Weather for one? I'll let you answer.
Sure. So the bridge projects were agreed upon, and, and those projects had come from the 2006 effort to develop the Wet Weather Improvement Program or the WIP. And many of those projects, the schedules and the estimates were based on outdated information. So we have had to, we've learned that the projects are in fact larger in scope. We had to update the designs. A fair amount of the delays are obstacles that we run into during design. Sometimes that can be conditions in the, the actual ground conditions, and others can be right-of-way acquisition. A number of them did have some delays related to right-of-way acquisition, and those are things that oftentimes, you know, are really out of our control and was something that we had put on when we were in the negotiations with the regulators. Both the city and the county made sure that they understood that we could encounter delays due to things like right-of-way acquisition. And to, to the extent that that's where the delays are occurring, regulators typically don't look at that as, you know, a violation. They, they would understand that. So that, so we report that quarterly, and we provide more information than what's on that table in a quarterly report, a little bit of narrative as to what the delays are and what we're doing to bring them back in, into the compliance timeline.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
And if I could, one thing I, I wanted to just clarify since I provided the sheet with the positions names and the dollar amounts, these are not salaries. They, they are total costs of personnel, so they would include benefits and pensions and everything. So just to be clear, I don't want anyone to think that that's actually what they're making. I mean, that's the cost, but as with any business and government entity, you know, the cost to us is not exactly what people take home. So just wanted to make that, make that clear.
Yeah, you have to include benefits.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I would like to get to the county's presentation then. Holly Christman, Karen Ball, Jograph are here. Jeff, do you have any precursor to this or?
No, I'll turn it over to Holly.
All right.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. You did a great introduction to the county's goals this year, so I'm going to dive right into the county's review of MSD's operating budget and our recommend, and staff recommendation. And then I'm going to turn it over to Karen Ball, who's going to go over the county modified capital improvement plan. But just to, as very similar to what we've talked about on Tuesday, we are not recommending a rate increase for 2021 based on revenues, operating budget, and our county modified CIP. As you heard on Thursday, MSD recommends a 1%, and again, just to reiterate, we are not recommending a rate increase in 2020. We have different levels of recommended budgets and also different assumptions used in our rate analysis. But just to be clear, we will have to continue to look at our forecasted numbers each year. It's, we haven't had a rate increase since 2015, so we do need to keep an eye on these as we move forward past 2020. We went through this, and I think Diana Christie went through kind of the history of how we got to the point we are today with the operating budget. I'll just say again, what we're focusing on today is the operating and maintenance budget, which is really what funds the daily operations of the sewer district. We do have a revised budget target of 121.6 million. MSD did come in in mid-August, as you can see, with a $129.9 million request, and as Diana Christie mentioned, it was increased to roughly 130.9. We worked very closely. I think Diane and I got to know each other pretty well over the past several weeks. There was some reductions to the most recent request today of 125 million, which is about 6% higher than the 2019 budget. So just to help you better understand, we, we took a look at the budgets. These are not the actuals, these are the budgets, over the past four years. And you can see there are increases, and some of those are justified with, you've heard increases in healthcare, we're all faced with that, increases in some non-discretionary spending. But you will see this, this is the, you'll see the personnel line item growth over four years is 19%, averaging about under 5% per year. Non-personnel growth, again, this is budgeted amounts, roughly 6% over a four-year period. And the total O&amp;M budget is averaging about 3%, 3% growth per year, again, budgeted amounts. And some of the drivers, you've heard Diana mention those. There is, I'm not going to go through, she went through pretty in detail, the increasing staff that they've identified as critical, increasing costs for healthcare and COLA. But you will see over the past four years, there, there has been growth in MSD's personnel to the proposed roughly up to 620 to 625 positions. There are also non-personnel budget drivers that we've talked in depth with MSD about. What are those? And there are some, again, we talked on Thursday, or sorry, Tuesday, about that. And there are things such as utility cost, hauling and disposal cost, chemicals, those types of things that are just, the costs are going up. So our recommended budget in summary, again, 0% rate increase. We are recommending an O&amp;M budget of 123.8 million, which is again, just under 2% over the county's revised target, but less than MSD's request, current request of 125 million. The main reason, we understand MSD has identified as our, as the operator, some operational needs. And while this won't fully fund all of the positions or requests that they've made, it does help address some of those operational issues.
Can I ask you very quickly? So the recommended budget then from the county is what increases year-over-year from last year to this year? What percentage?
It's 5.4% over 2019.
Thank you.
And you'll see the breakdown of the MSD's revised request versus the county recommendation. Again, very brief. I know you've heard a lot, but we have worked closely with the county team here to make sure we try to keep the operational needs of the district, but also balancing the needs of the ratepayers as well with this recommendation. With that, I'm going to call Karen Ball up if there are questions at this point, or we can have Karen run through the county modified capital improvement plan.
Ready to, okay, let's go on. Go through.
You have all of this information in your pocket. I'm going to quickly slide along to the summary page that, that allows you to see the comparisons to what MSD requested versus what the county is recommending at this time. This is the county modified CIP. The original, the original MSD request was 168 million in, which included bridge projects and asset management. It did not include any WIP activity for the Phase 2 to continue.
I want to clarify this point because we, we heard it the other day, but we didn't clarify it. So I just want to be clear.
Sure.
That these, the CIP budgets include asset management, taking care of the infrastructure basically, the continuation of bridge projects with, which have been generally agreed to by both the city and the county, and sometimes they're over a year long, so they continue into the next year's budget, and then additional projects that are related to the consent decree. And the city's version of the budget didn't have any of those Phase 2 projects in them. It simply had the asset management and the bridge projects that had already been approved.
Totalling 168 million dollars.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes.
If I could also just very briefly, because I had someone stop me in the building on this point the other day, and I know we talk about these, we talk MSD and sewer language all the time, and people at home are watching, and I think if we don't, if we're not careful, people can get confused. I had someone literally stop me in the building asking why MSD was paying so much attention to bridges and that that was the county engineer's job, and had to explain to them, and reasonable question, if you would just watch our hearings, and explain to them that the bridge, for people who are watching at home, that the bridge projects are a set of sewer-related projects that are bridging Phase 1 of the consent decree to Phase 2 of the consent decree, and they completely understood at that point and went their way. But since we do have people watching at home on TV, I just wanted to make sure that that point was clear.
Thank you for the clarity.
Great.
Yep.
You should also, I think it bears mentioning that the SBU budget, there is SBU budget in the operating budget itself to the tune of roughly $10 million for program activity, which includes cleaning claims and the damages that, that are seen to be the responsibility of the district.
Okay. So since you've brought up SBU, I am going to clarify that one as well because we did talk about it last week. So the SBU program is a sewer cleanup program, and we have always fully funded this to the degree that it's needed, and we don't know going into next year what the weather events will be. And so we have allocated what we think is an appropriate dollar amount, not really knowing what that will look like. If there is more funding needed for the SBU cleanup program, then we have historically always allocated those dollars to make sure that we've got the coverage in that program regardless of what kind of weather events we have during a certain year. So I just want to be clear on that point that I, I would expect that it would be in the intention of the board to continue along with that policy directive and say that we want to have full funding in there. It's just a little difficult to budget not knowing what we're going to be looking at.
And we keep an eye on it throughout the course of the year to see if it's tracking, you know, where, at levels where we need to make sure we get something to the board for additional authorization.
Thank you.
So having said that, there are $10 million worth of asset, of SBU funds in the operating budget. Separately, the county plan does recognize the, the need to continue moving forward on, on those worst areas that have been identified, namely funding for the, the Muddy Creek FEMA grant acquisition, funding for the, the rapid run Phase 3 SBU area. We always are trying to find ways to move forward resolutions to areas that have chronic flooding. And that is paramount to the, the county's plan itself is through the integrated watershed action planning to determine where stormwater can be. watershed action planning to determine where stormwater can be removed from the system and therefore not require an upsized pipe that typically just pushes the overflow downstream. That is, that is the biggest, biggest difference between the two plans, aside from the five-year versus 10-year. So, so the county team worked very collaboratively with MSD in a transparent manner over the last three weeks because that's literally, you know, the, the time we had after absorbing what was delivered to us on the 22nd and then getting back to them with some reaction. We also stayed focused on the, the need for maintaining a 0% rate increase. We don't have a plan right now, so it, there really is no known path forward for the projection of 10 years. And again, the original MSD CIP requested $168 million. We're currently standing at about $129 million, which allows us that flexibility. The goals also set, established by the board were to include our county Phase 2A plan in the CIP to make sure that those projects continue to move forward as discussions keep rolling in with the regulators and other parties. And included in this as well are five odor control projects for our, our known problems and our treatment facilities. Those we are all in agreement with MSD on. As it relates to Exhibit C, the fact sheets that we're requesting, most of those are largely because of discussions we've had over the last three weeks and agreements on, on moving planning dollars and, and removing the design dollars that Diana mentioned for 2020. They will, if those projects continue on, they will be funded for design in 2021. But the, the schedule for spending is dictated by the project timelines. And at this point, a large number of those don't even have the business case evaluations developed, so that will take some time. As projects are matured, we will, we will definitely take up issues along the way. I think I will also, while I'm here, I see folks are representing Stonebridge. I want to let them know that Stonebridge is funded in, in the CIP recommended by the county at $711,000 level. That is the completion of design. We will be watching to make sure that what was, what comes forward does not increase overflows downstream. And it actually has evaluated all potential separation possibilities. Another topic and that keeps coming up during the CIP is the Upper Muddy Creek Interceptor. The county has always supported improvements to the, the Upper Muddy Creek Interceptor. The, the CIP, the CIP routinely for the last 12 years has included $50 million in asset management. And if that, if that sewer had been deemed, you know, important and in need of fix and repair, there were certainly dollars available for that to occur. We do have a bit of a disagreement and y'all know that this is the, the gorilla in the room for the current situation with the city and the county. Again, the board's philosophy that they do not want to push overflows downstream to another location is, is paramount in this, in this debate. And everything that we've seen from MSD's documentation is that that would occur. And if that was to occur, it would set in motion the need for additional projects to mitigate that. So right now, as it stands, again, MSD submitted a capital budget requesting $168 million. The county currently stands firmly planted at approving a list of projects that is $60 million for asset management, roughly $50 million for WIP, and another $20 million roughly for allowance, allowances.
Remind us what the allowances are, what that category is?
The allowances allow flexibility with appropriated funds for MSD to proceed with improvements to pump stations, the, the kinds of equipment they need would be replacing pumps, the day-to-day operational kinds of.
Are this, they're kind of flexible dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and we, we would have requested that we, you know, stay, stay in touch on the list of projects that are being funded through those, those allowance categories.
Okay, thank you. All right. Are there any questions or comments before we move forward to speakers' cards?
We were saying the increase was 5.4%?
That's on the operating budget side.
Okay, on the operating budget, okay. That's what I wanted to make sure, I wanted to clarify on that. Okay. That's all I have right now.
All right. Thank you. Please stand by. Let's move to speakers' cards and I will call them in the order that I receive them. Robin Harrison is our first speaker. Please come forward. For those of you that have not attended any of our meetings, you generally have the pleasure of the floor for two minutes. There is a timer up on the podium that will give you an indication as to how you're doing. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you all for paying attention to what I have to say today. I truly appreciate it. I'm a resident of Bridgetown, live in Green Township. I purchased my house in 1999. Since that time, I've had sewer backups eight to 10 times. Most of those times, I dealt with them on my own. I did have a time where Green Township came to my house and they put something in my front yard and said that would be taken care of. However, the problem is still not fixed. Now, since that time, I have, I'm still cleaning up messes and I am tired of having to do this. MSD did tell me that it is a responsibility for the last two. And they've also told me that with the program, sewer backup program, I'm not a candidate to have something put in my home that would fix my problem for me. So now at this point, I want to know where I'm at and what happens from here. Because I don't want to be living in this home that has made me ill because of these sewer backups. But I'm not hearing anything about where everybody's going now. I was told according to the consent decree, my house should be bought out. Okay, so the budget I just heard doesn't include enough money for the people that are going through the same thing that I am. It's a systematic problem. It needs systematic change. We need to be taken care of because consent decree says those who suffer the most should be taken care of first. And that's where I'm at. I need to be taken care of, along with a lot of other people that are going through the same problems. Look at all the people on Muddy Creek. How long have they been experiencing this? You know, it's, it's a problem. We need help. We don't want to be there. If you want to come to my house and live, you'll see. You're welcome. Whoever wants to come, you can come. It's not nice. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know how much interaction you've had with MSD, but obviously MSD is in the room and handles the SBU program. So, and Diane, I'll, you'll follow up, yep. Don Rosenmeyer is our next speaker. Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. First, I'd also like to congratulate and thank Director Christie for MSD's support to date on the Stonebridge relief sewer project. This has been going on for 10 years where I can appreciate the previous speaker's frustration with whenever it rains, we have toilet paper and sewage flowing out of manholes on our property. And MSD has finally come around and, to their credit, they, they are working towards solving the problem, not necessarily pushing it downstream. They, their initial efforts would have created just overflows, pushed the overflows downstream, but they've now come up with a resolution that we believe is a step certainly in the right direction. The community of Stonebridge Lakes and our neighbors and around us supported the preferred alternative that is now, hopefully will be designed next year in a meeting in September. So I ask for your, and really, you know, we're all very hopeful you'll support continued, the design and easement acquisition in 2020 and construction in 2021. So our land and our lakes stop being contaminated with raw sewage and toilet paper. You know, we're just really frustrated and tired of it. And so, thank you. I hope we can count on your support.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. And for the record, we have received an email from a number of individuals from that project area. Thank you. James O'Reilly is our next Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Jim O'Reilly. I'm from the City of Wyoming, City Council, and I'm also involved with First Suburbs OKI, but First Suburbs in OKI are not speaking on this issue. Wyoming is. We have four subcategories. I'll get to within the minutes allowed. First, what will the residential home rates be in 2024 and beyond? Wyoming residents are looking at the costs of the sewer increases and we want to know what will the, what will the cost of owning a home in Wyoming be, taking into account the sewer rates for 2024 and beyond? The second question, what share of the City of Cincinnati's central personnel overhead is paid by our residents in Wyoming through the sharing of, if you will, designations of projects and project overheads? We'd like to know how much of City of Cincinnati income comes in through the funding from our residents. Third, we wonder whether the changes in the Clean Water Act policies of the administration, current federal administration, are going to affect Phase 2A and, and other phases. We wonder whether the administration's going to be affecting the position the US EPA is going to take as a result of some of the positions being taken in the Trump administration. It's very significant, of course, that we don't know what the judge will agree to, but we do know that the US EPA is changing its policies in a number of areas in the Clean Water Act. And fourth is unrelated to the Metropolitan Sewer District itself, but the Mill Creek Conservancy District is a topic I've been deeply involved with. With the help of the Auditor of State's office, we've looked into some of the Metropolitan Sewer District's contributions to the Mill Creek. And we'd like, we'd like the consideration of the Mill Creek Conservancy District funding that comes through MSD, particularly with Mr. Checo formerly of MSD, now being one of the three trustees of the district. The Open Records Act has specifically shown us what the city's plan is for the barrier dam. And we have a significant concern that passing the cost of the barrier dam from the Metropolitan Sewer District onto suburban residents would be a significant issue.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask Director Christie if you've gotten, can follow up in answer to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Our next speaker is Ross Selmaier. Good afternoon.
Thirty-one years ago, I was a budding architect. In 1988, after a long search, I finally purchased the perfect land for my new house in Madeira. It was a building lot already approved for septic, but I preferred sewers, so I inquired from the Sewer District about availability of sewer. And I was told to be available in two or three years, so I decided to wait. Around 1990, Madeira received requests for the Camargo Canyon subdivision, which required them to build sewers. They came up with a compromise that would allow the developer to build a dry sewer and use the pumping station until the dry sewer was connected to Camargo Road, which was at that time under a moratorium. Moratorium was completed a couple of years later, but the sewer was never hooked up. My, in the meantime, my neighborhood was sewed in 1998 with a makeshift gravity system, forced main combination that fed waste to the temporary pumping station. And it would have, if the sewer had been completed, we would have had good gravity sewers everywhere. It would have been a lot better. But to this day, I have never been allowed to get a new sewer tap for my, for my ground because the pumping station has been consistently overloaded by putting more and more and more subdivisions onto it. And in the meantime, septic regulations have changed and now it's very difficult to get a septic in Hamilton County. I have a large piece of property that's big enough for the, for the new septic systems. However, it's, I'm told it's too hilly and too wooded, so I no longer have a septic option. I've been paying taxes on this land for 31 years. I cannot build. I cannot sell. I cannot do anything with it. I haven't been able to get even a liability insurance for it. I'm retired now. It is too late to build my house. And if I did build it, I could no longer pay the taxes on it. I have a total of eight acres available that if developed proper, they could easily generate a quarter million dollars or more in additional taxes for local government. I've seen plenty of interest in the property, but in the end, nobody will touch it until the sewers are guaranteed. Please support the Camargo Canyon Pump Station Elimination Project, number 10270026. I'm only one of, I'm one of a number of property owners that would benefit from this. And I'm sure in the long run that everybody, including the city government and the property owners and MSD, would benefit from its completion of this long overdue project.
Thank you. Is, yeah, is there an update? I'm going to get a quick update as to what the status of that is related to this budget.
Last I checked, it was still on.
The Camargo Canyon Pump Station Elimination Project is, is recommended in the county modified budget.
We heard about the other ones. Okay, very good. Just want to make sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jackie Gruer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you. A year ago, we were told, and I'm from the Ludlow Run Northside area, that Ludlow Run, along with Mount Washington, were going to be receiving funds from the Urgent Capacity Fund. Well, Mount Washington did receive urgent capacity funding and is now a line item with $10 million total cost basis with getting $2 million a year until the project's done. Now, I'm really happy for Mount Washington. I'm really glad that happened. But what happened to Ludlow Run, we've had nothing. Ludlow Run has multiple CSOs draining into a ditch that runs through our property. It's not adjacent to our property. It's not down the road. It runs through the middle of our properties. Most of the homeowners along that area have little bridges that go over the ditch to get to the other side. Some of the bridges get wiped out during flooding. The sides, the sidewalls of the ditch fall down and owners are responsible, or not responsible, they have to because nobody else is responsible, to, to kind of try to fix the sides. We have to get debris out. I put on a mask. I wear heavy gloves. I borrow in my neighbor's hip boots and even when it's dry, to get out debris. We had COFA, I'm also with COFA. We had a call with the regional EPA in March and they said that CSOs running through people's property is a clear violation of the consent decree. A study for stormwater abatement has already been done. The authors say it is still workable. It needs further planning, design and construction. And Ludlow Run needs to be a line item in the 2020 budget or no work is going to get done.
Thank you. I remember talking about this back at a different public hearing and I thought we had started to address this. Karen, can you come up and help with this one?
Well, we, we did recommend funding of the Ludlow Run. I believe the dollar amount was about $300,000 to come from the urgent capacity allowance that we had in the 2019 budget. And after the budget is approved and appropriated, it's up to MSD to carry forward that, that with. And after the budget is approved and appropriated, it's up to MSD to carry forward that, with that direction. This project happens to be in our Phase 2, and it, I don't know what really happened to it, to be honest with you.
So, I just want to be clear on this point, then.
We authorized funds.
This was identified a while back. I remember this discussion, and I, there were a number of neighbors, right, that came. And so, it wasn't a bridge project. It's outside the bridge. Ryan, do you have a comment to it as well?
Yeah, I think I can clear this one up. So, the planning for Ludlow Run was funded under an allowance in the 2019 budget, and there's a contract with a consulting engineer, and the planning will commence in January.
Okay. But there's nothing in the 2020 that I saw. I mean, doesn't something have to, I mean, it's now we're going in 2020.
So the planning will take at least a year, and then in the 2021 budget, we may request design funding.
So let me clear, so the dollars have been identified allocated for the design, and then we would see any additional money to make it happen in a budget outside of this budget, be next year's budget?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. But keep us.
You can spend the money before, but it doesn't roll over to the.
Well, this is design money that's already been allocated.
It's planning, so preliminary design.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and let's keep, I know you'll help us keep track of this.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for sure.
I know you, I appreciate it. All right. Our next speaker is Florence Miller.
Thank you. I'm Florence Miller and also a member of COFA, and I'm going to be presenting a letter to all of you about our, about the MSD 2020 budget proposal. But also, I would like to ask that the budget for the sewer backup and program and the sewer backup plant prevention program, that that'll also be doubled because it doesn't seem to be enough, you know, to help those people that are adversely affected time and time again. And also, an independent audit of these two programs so that we can know that the money is spent wisely and that the MSD and the county are good stewards of the ratepayers' money. And then I also have a question of how much money does MSD actually have on hand in the bank for these capital improvement plans for these projects that are going on? So, thank you, and I'll present these letters.
Thank you. Thank you. You should give one of these to Director Christie as well, who's behind you. I'll make sure. Thank you. For the record. Thank you. Our next speaker is Ann Kessel.
So will you have an answer for how much money is actually now in the bank for these capital improvement projects? How much is actually in the bank now?
We can ask the director, yeah, to get that information for you.
Here a number of like 129 million, but is that really in the bank for these projects now? Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Kessel, there you are.
Good afternoon. I'm also here regarding the Ludlow Run area that should be a Phase 2 project. Some of what I was going to ask has been answered already, but I was, yeah, we wanted to ask for a line item in the 2020 budget for the entire project, you know, to have something definite, that there is a Ludlow Run Phase 2 project. Also, would want to ask that community representatives should be involved in the planning from the beginning. So if there is some planning that's supposedly going to start in 2020, would like to be involved with it and some communication as far as, you know, when it's going to start, who is, who is doing it, when, when, so we could be there. And once, once it's planned, then we would like it to be presented to the community for comments, that they can comment on the project once it's planned. And when it, and when the project actually starts, that the property owners should be told when and when, when and what will be done on their property and given progress reports. And following the completion of the project, we would like to have an evaluation that, of the project, so that, that we know that all the problems were resolved once the project's completed. So we definitely would like involvement with the community and property owners in the area, rather than have something that, you know, that's going to be planned and designed, and then afterwards, you know, this, you know, this is what we're presented with, and we have nothing to, to say about it. So, you know, if there's, I just wanted to ask if there, there isn't any possibility of getting a line item for the project, the Phase 2 project in 2020 then?
So, Ryan, would you come forward again? I just want to help illuminate the process here. So the money has been allocated to this project. It will be happening in 2019. Could you help us better understand the timing of the project and any community involvement that takes place?
But he just said there was money only allocated for, for planning.
That's right. For the design, and the money for the actual build won't, won't happen in next year's budget. We will take that up in the 2021 budget. That's why it's not in front of us.
It will definitely be, or is it possible you could spend money designing, planning designing, and then not follow up on it?
Well, not a very good question.
Because it was done in the past.
Okay. Let's let, I want Ryan to have an opportunity to talk to you about the process that you just asked about.
So I think, I'll just explain, there are three CSOs upstream of the Ludlow Run properties. They are listed in the consent decree. They were, they have a high index number, so they weren't done as part of Phase 1. We have to plan this project so that we even can really understand what the scope of it is and what the, what the project looks like. So until the planning gets pretty far along, we won't be able to have anything to really present or even come back and ask for design. So at this time, I don't know what the project's going to look like, but as soon as we do have a better idea, we can have a public meeting.
So, so I guess my, by way of process, then, once you have some more information, is there a process to engage the community at that point and have a public hearing in the community?
Yes, we could have a public meeting once we get close to having a business case evaluation.
Okay. Can we, I would like to request that we do that.
Yeah.
Make sure that we have that take place and notify the board and the community as to when that's going to happen?
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
There are a total of six CSOs in the area. I didn't mention that.
Thank you. All right. Frank Birkenhour is our next speaker. Good afternoon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to just compliment the county staff and MSD. We've worked with, they're overseeing the HMGP project for Muddy Creek, and we appreciate all that help. I'm here today on behalf of the Green Township trustees to talk about the Muddy Creek, Upper Muddy Creek Interceptor that was mentioned earlier. You know, from our perspective in the township, we would just like this to be fixed finally and it to be funded fully. We want to eliminate the restriction of the old pipe and substantially reduce overflow downstream. We have photos of an almost 100-year-old pipe that is leaking directly into the, the Muddy Creek, and there's toilet paper in our trees, and we're still getting a lot of complaints about the odor. This area will be under major construction, and it sounds like the reason why it's not being funded is there's a difference between a 30 and a 36-inch pipe. I just don't see the flow getting lower in the future. Maybe it is, but we have this huge construction project that's being kicked down the road every year because of this disagreement. I'm asking, what is the harm in putting a 36-inch pipe to plan for the future when we have this construction that seems from my experience to be an incremental increase? The spending for the EHRT facility was $40 million. We're still getting the complaints regarding sewage and odor in the Muddy Creek. In order for the EHRT to run efficiently as planned, I think that we need to fund this Upper Muddy Creek Interceptor, it to be completed with a larger pipe, hopefully, and to be staffed adequately. We're so close to fixing all these problems, and it sounds like the county and the city have worked together on a lot of other projects, and we'd just like to get this fixed as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to ask that Karen follow up with you individually about this. There is a lot more information to it, as you may realize. So Karen, if you would follow up, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Marilyn Wall is our next speaker.
Thank you. My name is Marilyn Wall. I'm here on behalf of Sierra Club. We support the county's stated intent to not raise sewer rates. We would like to see the rate structure made fair and equitable and to see greater efficiency and effectiveness at the MSD. We don't support the 2020 to 24 CIP. It's missing the work required by US EPA. The county's plan is not an improved plan, and the consent decree requires implementation of an improved plan. The plan's missing projects that would address sewer backups, except for the Mount Washington project. A lot of the pages are blank, so there's really nothing to comment on, on those projects. There's little data about the asset management plan, how crucial they are or aren't. Are they as bad off as the Upper Muddy Creek Interceptor, which is in very poor condition because, according to the MSD? MSD has underspent allocations for asset management over the last decade and a half, and why, why we suddenly needing another 83, 84 million for asset management? Really think there should have been more work done, more cooperation earlier in development of the CIP so that we could more fully comment on this, and that the disputes between the city and the county are delaying the implementation of the consent decree and forcing people to tolerate backups in their property and polluted streams. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elder Reglin.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Madam President, when I was here for the 1212 hearing, you requested that I write down my questions and for me to submit them right away so we can have an answer today. Well, I did exactly what I was instructed to do, and I gave those questions to, I believe, Todd Batum's aide, and I was hoping to get an answer on those questions today at this I've been sitting back there, and I listen each and every time I come here. It seems like the ratepayers are being left behind. You give us permission to speak when we fill out these speaker cards, but none of our questions are being answered. I know none of mine has been answered. Ms. Christie surely answered most of the, the commissioner's questions with, which I asked for, but I never heard any of our questions answered, and I would like definitely to get an answer before I leave here today. Also, I addressed, I know on four different times before the commissioners about renters, adding the renters to the, to the senior system program, which I stated before, I did my homework on this. It's nothing stopping or prohibiting the MSD to add renters like myself. I'm 65 years old. I'm a renter, but water bill is my name. All the bills is in my name, not the landlord. And so, I would like to see that added today. Ain't nothing stopping it, no law. We don't have to go to Congress or nothing. That can be done today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I apologize, I did not get the questions that you, and I don't see Victoria in the room, so, yeah, I'm happy to follow up on that. Yeah, go ahead.
I did receive the two questions and pass those along to MSD with the rest of the questions from the actual.
Diana, are you prepared to address the?
Yeah.
Okay.
Public hearing.
Thank you. If you would come forward, that'd be helpful.
Yes, thank you. I do apologize, I forgot one printout that really would have responded to his questions. I think I left it on the printer, to be honest. So, we keep a running tally of the SBU program's spending from its inception on our website, and we update that monthly. And I do have, that, it would be helpful if I had that, and I don't, because I know that one of his questions was, why have we decreased spending from prior years when we look at this year's budget? So that I can address. I know that last year in particular, while we initially started the year with a budget of 9.6 million, which is the same request for this year, we did halfway through the year come back, and based on some needs in the prevention program in particular, we had additional funding appropriated. So the total last year, which is actually 2019, apologize, so this year, right now, we have year-to-date about 11.3 million, and our appropriated total was 13, is that right? So we had, started with 9.6, and there was an increase approved. So when you look at that, you will see a higher budget in 2019 than we're requesting in 2020. Also, in the years prior, 2018 and 2017, we've also had some particularly high spending years due to claims from those very large storms. And so we had some years where, you know, the claims in particular increased that overall total to the SBU program. So again, I can provide that, you know, immediately after this hearing, and I could also send the link, because I know where it is on our website, but that shows year over year. In addition, the other question I believe was to break down the spending in more detail for the SBU program, and I think that same, that same figure that we include does break it down by the various components of the program. So we have the claims, then we have the response and the cleaning, and we show the totals for each of those activities, and then we also have the sewer backup prevention program where we're going out and installing devices. And so we track that spending for each category, and that is all provided. And then if there's anything that he wants to drill down even further, we would have to do a, you know, run some reports and provide that additional information. But it's just my, my error, I didn't bring that report with me today.
So, do you have Elder's contact information?
I believe I do. I know it, yes.
And if not, let's, let's get that, so you can get a direct response. Evidently, there is a response, it's just not here today. So let's make sure you get that right away. So I just want to bring some clarity to this. So we have budgeted the same amount to the SBU program this year as we did last year with the expectation that if there are more weather events, then we need to allocate more, we'll do it. So that's the reason for having spent more in 19, that's what's been budgeted in 20, because we know if we need to allocate more dollars, we'll do it. We just haven't put that in the budget.
That's right.
That's the answer. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if you could exchange information, that would be helpful. All right. Thank you. That's the last of the speakers' cards. Is there anybody else here to speak to during the public hearing related to MSD? Okay. So I, I know that we expect to have a vote on Thursday on all of these items, so are there any comments or questions, Vice President?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. Due to the exorbitant number of personnel that were listed, to avoid any duplication of duties, I'm asking if you can give me the job descriptions of the employees that you have listed, not only the ones that are listed, but the anticipated addition of employees if we're ever able to do that. So I'd like to have that. In addition, the quarterly allocation of the budget, is that a possibility strategically, can finance do that? Is that, I'm sure it's easier to allocate approved for the year, which we could do that, but can we, can we allocate quarterly is my other question. And lastly, I guess Diana might, can answer this. When was the last time that MSD had an audit, a financial audit of your funding?
So there are two, so two things there, I think. One is related to the audit, the other one is, you know, how reasonable would it be to have a quarterly budget as opposed to an annual budget? Or, or if not, and the county grappled with this a couple of years ago when I first got here, about, we talked about a quarterly budget and decided, instead of a quarterly budget, because it is, there's some instability that, we had a quarterly review that was really helpful to kind of walk us through. As the year proceeded, we could keep track of spending, and so I, and I'm not, I'm not trying to answer for the director. If a quarterly budget is feasible, then that's fine, but in lieu of that, if that's not feasible, then maybe a review would be the next best thing.
Thank you, Madam President, because that was really why I wanted a quarterly budget, so we could review how monies were being dispensed.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. The first question, though, are you interested in the job specifications, the job class The first question, though, are you interested in the job specifications, the job classifications for all of the MSD positions and not just the ones we were bringing forward?
Correct, all of them, uh-huh.
And then, so for the quarterly budgeting, I mean, yes, that would be operationally very challenging, and if not, you know, really impede our ability to operate, because personnel in particular, I think, is really concerning if we're not funding positions, and people's jobs are uncertain for the entire year, in addition to having to recruit some of these critical positions that we already have, a challenging time recruiting for MSD, and so that would just be an added significant complication. And then, really also, our contracting, most of our contracts are encumbered for the year, at the beginning of the year, based on the operating budget, and that work needs to be stable and continue in order to effectively do the work we do. So, I certainly appreciate and understand the need for more reporting, and we do quarterly updates, and we prepare those reports, we just haven't in the past year since I've been here presented that information and discussed it with the Board. So, we would be happy to do that and schedule that this year, and, you know, we can provide that information in advance of a meeting. As far as audits, MSD is audited by the State Auditor's Office every year. We have a financial audit, they come down, and they spend actually a couple of months, starting in March, I believe, and the last, those audits are available on our website. The last three years, I will point out that we've had clean audit findings with the highest review in terms of our financial records and how we are contracting our work. So, we've actually, you know, quite proud of that, despite some of the prior concerns that have been expressed. Our recent audits by the State are all at the highest level. So, I can send you the 2019 audit
That would be great, yeah.
From that audited 2018.
Okay.
So you don't have to look for it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, the operating budget, we're looking at a five point four percent increase, and at this time, I'm not comfortable with a five point four. I'm looking at a three percent where at least the employees that are currently there can get their cola. That's my main concern, not to punish them for being there and working there and doing a great job, but that's where I am right now, so.
Thank you.
So, I just want to follow up very quickly on this quarterly budgeting idea. So let's decide right now that we're going to have a quarterly review, a presentation in front of the Board, in addition to the information that you provide, so if you provide it in advance
That's great.
We have a hearing about it, and we have the opportunity to ask questions. So, let's get that on the books for next year. Administrator Aludo, you're leaning in, is it on purpose? No. All right, very good. Is there anybody else from the county side that would like to weigh in? Okay, thank you. All right, so we have a lot of work to do between now and Thursday. We will be reviewing these documents. We appreciate the input from both the city side and the county side, and I do personally want to say that I am grateful that there has been some recent cooperation. I think we've heard some frustration that that has not been the case throughout the entire year. There are complicating factors, we all understand that. However, we do get a better product when we've got the coordination between the two, clearly, and so I just want to reemphasize that this Board in the past has asked for that kind of cooperation between the two, and we are, I would like to once again say that we always are going to get a better product if we have that kind of cooperation as often and as early as possible from either side. So, but thank you, thank you for your work. We will have a final product in front of us on Thursday. We will sort through what the Board would like to recommend with the expectation that we'll have something related to rates, the CIP, and the operating budget. So, do I need to close the hearing? All right, so I'm going to move to close the hearing.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Also, at this time, I'm going to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Portune from the meeting.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you. That concludes the hearing for MSD, and we're going to move on. You're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the agenda, or you may leave, and we'll give you all a minute to clear out if you'd like. Thank you for being here. So we need that for the record, though? All right, so I am going to say, we're receiving something for the record. Can I have it, Holly? We have a letter related to the order, order, order. We're going to keep moving here. So we've got a letter related to the Whitewater Township Regional Sewer and Water District, and we're going to receive this for the record. I just want to put this on the record. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the 2020 Hamilton County All Funds Budget Appropriation. Jeff Aludo and John Brugan are going to present this issue.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I'm just going to go through this rather succinctly here, just to prep for the all funds appropriation on Thursday. You recall that the Board did pass a general, passed general fund budget levels back in October, and we indicated that we would come back in December as we typically do and do the appropriation. So I just wanted to go through a few of those items today and just talk a little bit about process, together with Budget Director Brugan. So first of all, if you remember back in, on October fifteenth, the Board passed a two hundred and seventy-six point four-five million dollar general fund budget that included various policy inclusions from the Board. The operating budget that you will see on Thursday will be slightly different than this. It will be just roughly five hundred thousand dollars higher, so just incrementally higher. But John, do you want to just hit on the nature of the increase, the, why the difference between the two hundred and seventy-six point four-five and the two hundred and seventy-six, or two hundred and seventy-six point nine, six million dollar budget?
Sure, at a very high level, what we've done is, we've recognized solid sales tax performance for the last couple of months, and increased our estimate on revenues for sales tax by about a half a million dollars. We put that toward not pulling back as far on our contribution to our medical self-insurance fund, so we're hedging against medical costs continuing to increase at a pretty good clip, and this gives us a little bit more pad in that fund than where we were a couple of months ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I also just want to, for those who are interested in knowing, again, while we're just appropriating, the Board passed the general fund operating budget back in October, we're appropriating now, but for those who are interested, on www.hamiltoncountyohio.gov, there is a plethora of information about our general fund operating budget, including the Administrator's recommended budget, which essentially was passed by the Board with some additions, some policy-related additions related to some staffing support for our boards and commissions internally, some IT consolidation work, some additional funding for the TID and HCDC, and some additional or continuation of funding for infant mortality work as well. So all of that can be found on the county's website, and the vast majority of what is included in the operating budget remains consistent with what was in the admin rec, and there are some fact sheets as well for people at home who want to know exactly what the Board will be appropriating. In addition to that, we will also have on Thursday appropriating the restricted fund levels for 2020, and this is largely just the restricted funds of the county that fall outside of the general fund. Largely, these funds stay rather stagnant over the years, they have regular revenue sources, regular expenditures out of them. I would just advise the Commissioners that if they would like, back in the first quarter of this year, the Budget Office produced a, I believe at the Board's request, a summary of all the restricted funds that talks exactly about what each one does. So as you review in advance of Thursday, the restricted fund levels that are being recommended, if you have any questions, this may be a good place to start, and of course, John or I will be available to answer any questions in advance of that. John, anything additional on the restricted fund?
I would just note that, you know, that book certainly provides some basic information about each of the funds. It's obviously the 2019 report. We do have probably sixty to seventy percent of the 2020 updates to that report ready to go, but if there's any fund that you want a full update on, we can probably turn that around within the course of about an hour. Most of them are very close to completed, and obviously, the budgets themselves are loaded into performance and will be ready to load on Thursday.
And the budget document that the Board will pass on Thursday, as it's an all funds budget, will reference the restricted fund budget and the general fund budget, so it will be a number that will be in the one billion dollar range because it includes all of the levies, all of the JFS funding, everything, but we will also break out the amount that is general fund related as well. But I just want, as we prepare for Thursday, I just wanted to make sure that people understand why that number is what it is. The final budget document that the Board will be acting on relates to the Capital Improvement Plan. This is one that we do every year as well. This is a plan. It is not really a capital improvement, it's not a capital improvement budget, it's just a plan. So this includes every capital project that has been scoped by county facilities, a lot of our deferred maintenance projects are in here, but when the Board passes this, you're not passing, you're not authorizing the administration to go off and do this. You are just saying, we approve of this plan, and for us to actually move forward on any of these projects, we have to come back in 2020 to get it separately legislated, appropriated, et cetera. I will say, there's a memo in here that talks about county facilities' most critical projects in 2020. They relate to chillers, pipe replacements, electrical systems upgrade, fire alarm replacements, additional electrical work in various downtown buildings. Because of the, in the operating budget, we had put some additional money for capital improvements. This will be the first year that we'll start to be able to make some dent in some of our deferred maintenance based upon the Board's allocated budget, which is a good thing. But we will be coming back to the Board later on in the year with a much more robust plan as to how we anticipate going about tackling the two hundred-plus million dollars in deferred maintenance that we have, as we've discussed throughout the budgeting process. So, those are the three elements of the county's budget. We have the operating, the general fund operating budget, we have the restricted fund appropriation, and then we have the capital improvement plan. John, anything else to add on any of those three?
No, that's all, and they'll come forward as two resolutions. The capital plan comes as one, and then the two budgets comes one piece.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay, thank you, thanks, John. Appreciate it.
So we will see you on that issue on Thursday.
Yep. All right, so rolling into then item number three, the summary of the by-leave items for the meeting on Thursday. So as people may or may not know, our last meeting of the year is going to be Thursday, and so we are going to be dealing with a number of by-leave items at that meeting, and we generally have by-leave items at our meetings, but we have more than usual, and so the administration and myself, we thought it would be helpful to kind of run through these in advance so that we have the information that we need now. If we have any questions, we can get them answered before those by-leaves come forward on Thursday, because we're going to have more than usual.
Thank you, Madam President, and I would also just reference on Friday, the Board should have received an email memo from myself outlining all of these issues, and it has attachments of all of the different resolutions that would come forward on Thursday as well. So, again, I just would want to go through these. As Madam President referenced, this is more than we typically have in a given meeting, and a lot of times this happens at the end of the year, when we want to get things done before the close of the year, that we come forward with a higher level of by-leaves. The first item, I'm just, I've got one file or one PowerPoint slide on each of these. One of the first relates to the SPCA agreement. I think I referenced this a meeting or two ago. This relates to a six-month extension for the SPCA agreement, allowing for separate transitions of the patrol and enforcement function and the kenneling function, and working with our advisory committee over the course of that time to separately pull back on each of those to the county as an in-house function. So we would anticipate the patrol and enforcement function coming internal to the county within the first quarter. Kenneling is going to take a little bit longer time, we have to deal with some property transition there. That's how we go about doing that, we want to rely on some of the advice of the advisory committee as well, from a process and procedure perspective, but we anticipate both of those services coming under the county, as well as the staffing related to those services in 2020. They're just going to take a different amount of time in order to do that, but that'll be on the agenda for Thursday as well.
Can I ask, John, were we able to get additional members for the committee, John?
We have about five or six members
Okay, great.
And we did take a couple of recommendations from the Board.
Okay, thanks, okay.
The second item relates to the Wyoming Surplus Water Agreement. Similar to, as we've mentioned before, there are multiple suppliers of water in the county. The county contracts on behalf of the unincorporated areas of the county for the provision of water to those unincorporated areas. The largest by far surplus water agreement is with the City of Cincinnati. The Board just approved a new fifty-year agreement with the City of Cincinnati earlier on this year. The City of Wyoming is another provider. The original agreement of that particular contract dates back to 1989, it expired in 2017. We extended it until the end of this year. It serves three hundred and seventy-four accounts in the unincorporated areas. We maintain fifty-seven hydrants in that area. It has a one point two-five multiplier, similar, exactly the same as what the City of Cincinnati's multiplier is for the next thirty years. So this, I believe Wyoming passed their version of this at their council meeting last night, so this would be coming to the Board with our recommendation for approval on Thursday. That is the Wyoming Surplus Water Agreement.
I was just going to say, we'll take questions as we roll through these.
Sure, and just at any time.
Yeah, thank you.
The next agreement that would be coming forward relates to an energy conservation agreement. We have done several phases of energy conservation work within our buildings over the past decade and more. In fact, as we were going through lean budget years and didn't have the money to do capital improvements, we actually financed a lot of improvements that we needed to do on the backs of the energy savings, the energy cost savings that those energy improvements produced. So, over the past decade, we've done about twenty million dollars in capital improvements that saved us roughly one point two million in energy costs that we used to finance that twenty million dollars in capital improvements. So, because, it's amazing how time flies, but because that is now ten, twelve years in arrears, we are now to the point, again, where we can start revisiting some of these projects. Technologies have changed, we've had buildings that have aged a little bit more, so we want to, we did a competitive bidding for this. Amoresco won the competitive bidding process. We would like to have them go back into some of our buildings, Communication Center, eight hundred Broadway, the courthouse, the Justice Center, to look for additional projects that can be done. This would be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that initial planning work. The way this typically works is we only pay the energy services company that hundred and fifty thousand dollars if we decide not to do a project. If we decide to move forward on the project, that money just gets rolled into the bond financing that we would do to fund the energy improvements, so we would only be paying that hundred and fifty thousand if ultimately we determine that we are not going to move forward on any of these energy conservation projects. And this is really good timing for this, because we talked about the capital improvement program. As we put together that program in the first part of the year for the Board, we will have the ability now to include a slate of energy conservation projects as well, which would be another chip off of the deferred maintenance levels that we currently have. The next item is a bond proceed transfer. So the Board approved the acquisition of an interest in the Hilltop property earlier on this year. We have current bond proceeds and a JFS facility project. That project is currently in the planning phase, it's not moving forward with construction as fast as we initially thought it would. Given the ability of JFS to direct pay for that project, we are moving the bond proceeds into another account where they can be used to finance the first Hilltop, first portion of the Hilltop property acquisition as identified in the agreement passed by the Board earlier this year. And that, as the Board might remember, the closing date on that was very early January in 2020, so that's the need to get those dollars moved before the end of the year is important, just so we have the ability to close early next year. We also have an agreement related to the Bengals and MEMI. We also have an agreement related to the Bengals and MEMI. This is, this is good timing on the heels of the announcement of the, of the music venue last week. But this just formalizes the understanding and agreement between the county, MEMI, and the Bengals on the development of the music venue, how construction is going to move forward, how design is going to work, such that it stays within the context of our lease with the Bengals, height guidelines, site restrictions from the stadium, means of ingress and egress for vehicles and pedestrians. It also details the relationship between the team and MEMI related to the use and operations of the music venue. As there will be an operational relationship between the Bengals and the music venue, the Bengals will have the, the right to access the music venue on team use days and game days. And MEMI will be supporting the team in, in that process and making the, the venue available for team patrons on certain days throughout the year through an agreement that they work out together. Finally, there will be, this is what we know of right now. There may be some other smaller budget adjustments coming forward. The one that we are aware of right now is for municipal court. This is a justice assistance grant, $130,000 for an alternative community release options for offenders. The JAG grant is one that we get routinely through the court. They wanted to get that approved by the end of the year, so that they can be off and running early on in 2020. So again, I just wanted to make sure, have this for the board, just so you got a preview of these. And if there are any questions in advance of Thursday, that, between now and then, we could talk about them, just so there's no surprises coming on Thursday. This all, of course, is in addition to anything that would be passed on the MSD budgets as well. Thank you, Commissioners.
Madam President. If I could just ask about the bond proceed transfer. The JFS facility project, is that a new or existing?
It's an existing project. It's a, it's a furniture and renovation project in the, in the Alms and Depke Building. We issued debt for it. They're still in the, I think, doing, they're still in the process of doing planning and some design work for that. But we've gotten to the point, we think that we can have JFS actually direct fund those payments as we move forward, which will allow us the ability to transfer those proceeds and just not have to go back out and issue additional debt.
And that's just the planning and soft cost. Ultimately, we'll be coming forward with hard cost pieces of this project, the actual implementation as it happens, and we'll bond finance those as they happen in phases.
Okay, thank you. But just to be clear, this is a financing proposition in front of us, because we need to go out for bonds for the property, and so this has expedited, right, the process for us?
This eliminates the ability, this eliminates our need to go out for debt for that, for that property acquisition right now, correct?
Yeah, okay. I just want to be clear.
Just so we understand where, where we've been paying this, because these bonds were issued a couple of years ago. There was enough premium, there was enough dollars that we got from the issuance of those bonds initially, in addition to the, the primary amount. And we've been paying the debt service with that. So it's not, we're not even having to shuffle anything related to debt service over the last couple of years.
Great, okay, thank you. All right.
And I would conclude my report on this, John, unless you have anything else to add, anything to come in, in the last hour or two that we were aware of?
Nothing new, but, you know, we always might have something that we add to that budget adjustment list.
Okay.
With the amount, with essentially a billion dollars worth of funds funneling through the, the budget office over the course of a year, it is not unexpected that as we look to close out the year in all of the various departments throughout the county, that someone will come forward saying, hey, we really need this by the end of the year. And if that happens, we'll make sure to get that information out to the board as quickly as possible for, before Thursday.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I suspect we'll have additional by leaves. I just was trying to get some of them under our belt, right? So, okay, thank you. Thank you for doing that. Thank you for the review. There's nothing else on our regular agenda, and seeing no additional items, I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to RC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the acquisition of property.
Second.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Just as a reminder, our meeting on Thursday is an evening meeting at 6:30 here in the county administration building. Thank you.